Okay, it is 2:30. Let's call the special meeting to order. It is Thursday, March 20th at 2:30 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The flag is in the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Sue.
Here.
Trudy.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
John.
Here.
Laura, here. We have a corner.
Very good. Board member conflict of interest statement.
None.
None?
None.
Perfect. Public comment on agenda items? Public comment closed, 2:31. Approval or do we have any amendments to the meeting agenda? No? Approval of meeting agenda, please?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Unanimous? First item is the water agreement amendment and the Mead and Hunt Water Operator Agreement, and these both pertain to MGD out at Commerce Park. So we need a motion to amend the original agreement, which was signed October of 2024 by the previous board and to review the water operator agreement.
I will make that motion. I have a motion that we amend the original agreement that was signed by the previous board and review the water operator agreement.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
And discussion. The original agreement that was signed in October is attached. The amendment requires MGD to be the contracted party. And because they are connecting to the well that is we that the township has put in for the use of the wastewater treatment plant, it is highly recommended by District Health for that in a water operator be hired. That agreement is there as well from Mead and Hunt. Tammy Gall has put that proposal together. She's known to us. Again, it was highly recommended that we have a water operator. So the amendment is...
There's not a copy. I printed it off at home.
Oh.
The amendment, doesn't matter. I looked at it at home.
So the parties seek to supplement the agreement to provide clarity as to the connection, the installation and maintenance of the water. System is described in the agreement. This is MGD will pay a one-time connection fee, which is $4,400. They'll pay it upfront. That is the amount of the contract for the water operator. They're going to pay that upfront, okay? And then we'll turn around. The township has contracted with Mead and Hunt since we own the well. MGD will pay the water operator fee of 200 a month for what is that, 22 months? So December 31st of 2026. They'll pay that upfront. We'll turn around and pay the contract to Mead and Hunt. Okay? And Mead and Hunt will then hold the...
I'm sorry.
You're okay.
I mean, you know, the one at home was all marked up. So I apologize. I didn't think... I'll zip it.
No, no, don't zip it. Do you need a moment?
No.
So Mead and Hunt will prepay that. We the township will turn around and pay the contract to Mead and Hunt. The Mead and Hunt Water Operator Contract will be good is the period is April 1st of 2025 to end December 31st, 2026, $200 a month. There is call-out fees at 90 an hour, and we will bill that if and as it occurs. Mead and Hunt will hold the additional water testing that's required because we have a second party on the well. It's to protect the township as well as Mead and Hunt's customers.
So Trudy, real quick, so you say we're going to turn around and pay Mead and Hunt. So MGD is going to pay the township upfront? And then the township will pay that money to...
Correct. So it's, yep, exactly. That's exactly how it'll happen.
And then at the end of that 4,400, there's...
Then the...
Negotiate again?
Well, at the end of that contract year, starting in October, then we will renegotiate the contract. But the water reimbursement, so this is for the water operator. And then we will bill them. I believe the contract signed in October said quarterly. No minimum of...
Quarterly.
Yeah.
Six.
$6 per thousand, yes, as agreed to in the October, signed October contract.
But the, because that's going to be an ongoing contract that we're going to have to have with Mead and... or not Mead and Hunt.
MGD.
And no, Mead, yeah, Mead and Hunt. But it's a one-time connection fee. And then are they, when that, that's for period? Sorry, I know, I think I just...
April 1st to December 31st of '26. April 1st of '25 through December of '26. We've asked them to prepay that contract, that water operator contract.
And then at the end of that, we attempt to get them to continue to pay that?
Yes. Well, we begin the renegotiation. Yeah, yes. And the stipulation in the contract is in the amendment is that we would renegotiate for a water supply operator with at least the same qualifications as Mead and Hunt offers. And those people, as we know, are few and far between.
Yeah.
Yeah. The amendment also goes on to say that MGD will agree to follow any rules as amended from time to time by District Health Number 4 or the State of Michigan or the United States Agency with similar oversight. And we will engage in reasonable best efforts on an ongoing basis to ensure ongoing compliance with such rules and decisions of lawfully designated regulatory or governing authority over the party's use of the well.
And there's going to be a meter at the well or on their condos?
There's a, so there is a, yes, there is. The short answer is yes, there is a meter. They have a small wellhouse building attached to the back of one of their large buildings.
Okay.
In there is a meter, but there will also be a, what's referred to as a puck on the outside. So the meter is readable from the outside. We don't have to enter their facilities at all. And that will be Township Parks employees who currently do our meter reading for a select number of...
Sewer bill.
Yeah.
One of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that will be billed out quarterly at the rate agreed to in that original.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments or...
And they already have the reader? We have the meter?
We have the reader, and they put in a meter that is compatible.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a requirement in the...
So I'm certainly not against any of this by any means. I think it's great that, you know, there's more business opportunity, more housing coming in, more growth. My only worry is something, you know, with MGD, Mr. Teeter and was it Brian?
Brian Koblens.
Koblens, you know, speaking at some of the other meetings. So I don't think this would ever be an issue. But what happens in October of 2026 when they say, well, we can't come to an agreement with the township on the water use? Can we shut their water off?
Well...
Do we go into a lawsuit? I guess we can't look into the future like that, but you have to.
Exactly. And in the original agreement, there is a termination.
Okay, it's number six.
There you go. Thank you. Number six. A termination. If they, if it was determined that we couldn't come to an agreement and we parted company, there is an escape clause, as I refer to it, where you have to give proper notice. I believe it's 180 days. And we could not shut off their water, and we would not do that anyway. But until such time as they were able to have a plan to provide their own water. One of the concerns I had was they have in their, in their design, in MGD's plan, was to have 54 units out there. My concern was we didn't want to have 54 different agreements. We wanted one agreement with the developer. And so that's this. And they can work out within their development. However, they're going to monitor water usage within each individual condominium, storage unit.
This is 365, 365 days.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep. Such notice shall give no fewer than 365 days prior actual written notice of such termination.
Well, and in number three, they talk about agreement will not be terminated for any reason except upon 180-day prior actual delivery of written notice.
So two different things.
Yeah, well, but again, we'll do our diligence in negotiating when the time comes. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
It sounds like they want to buy along as soon as possible.
Yes, with the weather well up until a couple of days ago. Well, this morning, the weather was such that they're anxious to get going, and we can understand that. But yeah, we have to make sure that we're protecting the well, which is was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but the well was put in for the treatment plant, which was put in for the original...
Yes. And then, so three or four, we did an ordinance that covered, there was three or four parcels that it covered because of possible contamination from the sewer plant.
Okay.
So there was a radius around that. And those other parcels ended up purchasing something different. So they have their own well.
Right.
So yeah, that ordinance was put in there for limited number of parcels.
Right. And this one was not included in that, so...
It's not.
And that is out there. I think it's on the website. I think that's it. Yeah, they're anxious to get going. We do have a water ordinance out there. This parcel was not included in that. And as we recall, MGD got caught up in the, they had broken ground on their development and then realized, as I understand it, then realized there were underground fuel storage tanks at the business next door, which encapsulated their entire development area, but...
Is it in the whole property, piece of property?
I'd have to get a compass out, but yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, there were other, there was an option. There were a couple of other options which did not appeal.
Well...
But, and this was, again, this is an agreement that we inherited. So trying to make the best of that. Okay. Any other comments?
Ready to vote?
Okay. Do we want to roll call vote on this? Perhaps? All right, Sue?
Yes.
We had, we had, yeah, we had a motion made. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Trudy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Motion passes unanimously. And the next item is the Township, Tusker Township Community Cleanup Day. Always popular.
Very helpful.
Yes, it is very helpful. I participated last year, and it seemed to be well received. It was held at the, well, let's get the motion on the table first. So Community Cleanup Day. We're looking to set a cleanup day date and the times. And to be, our vendor will be PAC Sanitation Incorporated. They were the same vendor last year out of Onaway. We'll hold it out at the Campbell Pratt Airport, September 13th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May we have a motion? I guess I can make that motion since I just read it. I'll make that motion.
And that's September?
Yes, ma'am. It's the first Saturday after Labor Day. That...
So that's next, basically. Okay. I'll support that.
Okay. So the motion on the table is that we set the date of September 13th, which is a Saturday, the first Saturday after Labor Day, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM out at the airport. PAC Sanitation will come in from Onaway. And if you went last year, they had, you didn't even need to get out of your car. They just opened the back or opened your tailgate and hauled out your stuff and put it in the appropriate buckets and bins and trailers and sent you on your way.
Did they check residency?
Yes, they did. Yes. There was a welcome table, and I provided my driver's license, and it was confirmed. And then from there, I was in and out. I think I waited in line with maybe three cars ahead of me. And I was in and out within probably 20 to 30 minutes.
Was there a, any restriction on it where it's not builders coming in with...
Yes.
Okay.
I believe they do have, they...
Must be household items, appliances, furniture, household trash. No demolishers, materials, automobiles, machinery included.
Okay, great. And I guess if we, you know, it looks, it appears that they accept tires.
Yeah.
For initial cost. Yeah, there's...
Now, we pay for that?
That's what it looks like. I would not be inclined to pay for that.
No, and then free unloaded units? I'm assuming air conditioners?
Refrigerators, air conditioners, yeah, no.
I would say if somebody wanted to bring them, that's something they would have to pay.
They can pay separately for that.
Yeah, just make sure that that's... I don't know what was done in the past.
We can ask them. I didn't see that contract.
Two questions.
Yep.
A, are there any other companies, GFL, you know, some of the other trash companies?
Triple D.
Triple D, Waste Management, that offer the same service? In conjunction with that, would it be a request for proposal, I guess, before we...
Well, that's a good question.
Last year, nobody wanted to do a Saturday.
Oh.
Part of the reason.
And then, I mean, like, what do people do if they have paint cans? And, you know, that's considered, you can't bring that.
No, that would go to Sheboygan or Potaski when they have their...
I don't know, I guess, we're gonna measure if it's not until September, maybe throw out a request for bidding.
So approve the motion to set the date, but not necessarily the company?
Probably date, but I guess maybe on their availability.
Well, and that was, I think, part of PAC's issue was there weren't many dates available. But they, people were setting dates a year in advance.
You won't hold the date, will they?
No, they won't hold the date. Well, what do we want to do? Do we want to put a request for proposal out? Or what were some of the, GFL, Triple D? What were, somebody else mentioned something else?
Waste Management still around or third?
GFL, I think, or GFL. I don't know.
I guess my opinion on it, do some homework on it, table it?
Just till the April?
Just till the April meeting.
Okay.
If that comes out of it, then we will place...
Do you... Making a note to April meeting. Do you think, under the job description, Jonathan, that that provides sufficient guidance for a request for bid? And do you want, do we want to have them include tires and free-on but at the expense of the resident? Or just say not at all?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the other thing we need to make sure is that they're willing to charge the people who come in with that.
Right, right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'm thinking...
No, I think, no.
We would have to post something for the citizens. You can bring this stuff, but...
You have to, it'll be a private pay situation, so...
And from personal, from personal experience, PAC is who I go with, and they're the cheapest around. I don't think you're gonna, I mean, I still, let's check it out. But I don't think you're gonna find something less expensive than them. And they'll like, if you leave two chairs out or a mattress at your house and you just call them, they'll come and get it on your trash day, and they charge like minimal amount compared to some of the other people. So just think of what it's worth.
I just want to make sure these others are verified. Years ago, Burt Lake Preservation covered the cost of tires. So I don't know if they would consider that again?
Well, I think, I, I think it's worthy of an ask. But do we want to set a date and find a vendor first before we ask? But then do we, if...
I just want to make sure that the vendor is in agreement that they will charge the people coming in for that.
Right, right, well...
Chris, do you have any clue what happened last year?
And I don't remember seeing any of that, but I, again, I was in and out so quickly. I don't...
And what, if they can see who they are using?
Yeah, and I saw that theirs is in June, but I can do that.
I can do that, too.
Okay. Okay. Be nice to... If several Townships banded together, maybe we could get economies of scale and, I don't know, another, another conversation to have. Not this year, it's too late. We're on the verge of spring and summer, but in the future, maybe. Okay, so the motion on the table is to set the Community Cleanup Day. We want to table that, or do we want to vote on that, turn it down and do a new one or amend this to flavor?
Table.
Table till the next meeting once we get more information on different companies and more information on the extra items that...
Okay.
But make sure that we take care of it at the April meeting. Because we, like, if we do go with them, we don't want to lose that date. It's already that far.
And we may have, we may by April, but that's a choice, that's a, that's a risk we take.
I have a question. Since they've gone back to having the Community Cleanup Day, are they still doing the anytime cleanup vouchers? Because that was, that's a double... They had gone to the anytime cleanup vouchers because we were having difficulties monitoring whether it was just local residents or not. And so that, just to bring a roll of history, and that is why we went to the anytime cleanup vouchers. But if you're back to offering this again, why continue the anytime cleanup vouchers?
That's good.
I can't answer that. Were they, did they, did the anytime, how did they work? Where did they work? How did they work? Did they have an expiration date?
You get one coupon or one voucher per residence, per year, to go over...
Fiscal year.
Yeah.
It's $27.40, I think it is. Or one, don't pay.
And the township paid that? Do we know, we probably don't know without research, how many of those we had issued in the past to do a cost comparison?
We'd have to look. It's, this month we got one.
Yeah, this time. I mean, it's not that we get that many. And that's why it's never likely anytime cleanup voucher. But I just think it's, you know, might be a little redundancy, but...
Yeah. Well, it might be, but then again, if you're not here on the cleanup day, I don't disagree. I just...
It's just something to consider.
Yeah, so maybe...
And I think you can take, can't you take your household batteries? I would have to look. I think you can take them to Emmett, but I don't think you can take them to PAC.
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll, so the request, let me jump ship.
Sorry.
So the request for proposal, they're saying on this one at least, and if we're going to use this as a template, do we want them to specifically batteries, household? You know, what's, what, paint?
Yeah. Hazardous, I think that's what the hazardous waste items are. I think that's the paint and the...
Maybe have them define that if they need to? And maybe I'm being too picky.
Well, it doesn't say that there's no paint. I'm thinking...
But I think that falls under that.
Paint and the hazardous waste item. Okay. I think that needs to be specified.
We need to, we need to define that. Okay. Okay, so we want to table this motion to the April meeting. We'll put it out for proposal. We have at least a few in the, a few companies in the area that may or may not be interested. We could reach out to them and say, hey, do you do Saturdays? And we'll have that back by, what's it, April 1st? That only gives us a week, 10 days?
Tuesday, I think it's the 1st.
What's that?
Yeah, because Monday's the 24th.
Doesn't have time? I'm sorry.
A lot of it's going to be, but either they're not going to do it on Saturdays.
Right, exactly. All right, so we'll have a comeback.
It must be done with phone call versus...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Phone.
Phone.
By April 1st. We'll ask for some clarifications on what's hazardous waste. And if they, if, will they do a Saturday? That's the primary thing. Bill residence. Oh, seriously. Or tires, free-on. And I think last year, Bob Kramer was out there at the Welcome Tent, and he did verify my ID that I was a resident, so... What if...
I think all the board members worked last...
Worked the whole day, yeah. Okay. So what happens if somebody shows up and they're not from here?
They have to leave. Yeah.
They have to leave?
They can't.
Okay.
It's a test for timing, because they, they don't let somebody into any of the other Townships, so...
It's a service that we're offering for residents.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I would say maybe unless they can provide, you know, if this is their summer home up here.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, yeah, they should bring tax bills or something like that. Oh, yeah, I'm not, yeah.
So maybe throw that on the posting too, you know, if you're...
It's for, it's for all...
Secondary home.
It's for, for any property owner. Is that for vacant land though?
Well, and again, that's where we want to look at that. The excluded items for, you know...
Yeah, because it says on there, brush leaves, grass clippings. And so if somebody, whether it's an empty lot or a summer home, you can't clean up your yard in the spring or fall or whatever, and then bring it in.
Okay, okay. And then we'll look into those anytime vouchers, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not that large of an expense, then...
Right.
I think printing the cards too. I mean, I think normally, last time when I was the office assistant, we had a lot of cards.
Yeah, we printed them. We had them.
Okay. Well, and I know they, they do that at the recycling center. They offer that service at a... center. They offer that service at a discount, but we've already... Do we do that with Sheboygan then? The anytime voucher? Or does it go to Petoskey?
Those two counties, Zima County.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the motion is to set the cleanup day. We're going to do an RFP on that to get some date, ask some more questions. And so for now, we're going to table this motion to set the date. Right?
Yes.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, and then, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Table that. Public comments.
Everybody's here at dawn.
I was staring at Betsy.
No public comments. Board comments. None?
I like this setup.
You like this setup? Okay, it is 3 o'clock.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.